All right, team, we are officially beginning our special meeting. Tonight, we will be sharing our reopening plans and voting on our reopening plans as well. So, thank you to those who are joining us at home. Thank you to the central office team and school committee members that are here tonight. I will now turn it over to Dr. Bada.
Good evening. Well, we'll start with our pledge, so I'm going to go ahead and share our screen.
All right, team, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America.
Para los que están viendo nuestra reunión de casa, nosotros vamos a tener traducción de esta reunión. El final de la agenda, hay un número que ustedes pueden llamar para recibir traducciones de esta reunión. Gracias.
So, this is our special meeting and we're really excited to present our reopening plan for, we're calling it School Reopening 2.0 because this is the second time that we do this. So, I'm going to go ahead and stop and share my screen so that way we can put the PowerPoint on. And we will go through. Okay, there we go. All right, so I'm gonna start us off and I'm gonna have our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction do, we're gonna pivot back and forth a little bit. But I'm real excited to present our safe reopening of schools 2.0. We are doing this again and we have revised according to the new DESI guidelines. So, our agenda tonight is a new recommendation for reopening of Chelsea Public Schools for the spring of 2021. Why the new recommendation? And it is a bit of a phase in of in-person learning. And then we'll have some questions and we'll take questions and comments. So, why the new recommendation for the reopening of schools? We've always said that the city of Chelsea's health factors, as well as local and state guidance, indicate that it's safe to start bringing students back to our classrooms. And that guidance from, we have new guidance from DESI and the Massachusetts Board of Education. And then, in addition, we also have a pooled testing program that's ramping up for our students and staff. And vaccinations are becoming available for those who work with K-12 students. So, our new recommendation is to phase into in-person learning and a robust in-person model with our most vulnerable students returning first. In light of that, we had to send out family surveys another time around, just like we did in the summertime. So, right now, we're still receiving surveys back from families. We started surveying our families in grades K through four first. And then, we started to survey our middle school families. So, in the current K-12 family preference survey, we have received 2,615 responses to date. And overall, 31% of families are requesting a change in assignment for their child. So, that could mean that I chose remote in the fall, now I want to do in-person. I chose in-person in the fall, and now I want to do remote. So, the change and the shift is actually a total 31% shift. 41% of families who signed up their children for online learning for the fall now would like in-person learning. And then, 24% of the families who chose hybrid or in-person learning for the fall would like to switch to remote learning. So, you can see here where the percentages have fallen. And in general, we're seeing a shift of about 31%. And you can see where in March for kindergarten through fourth grade, 56% of our families have chosen in-person, whereas 44% have chosen remote. And the numbers are pretty similar for the most part for middle and high school. And we're still getting responses there. We've also revised our reopen plan that we created in the fall there according to DESI guidelines and new safety guidelines and new information. So, we will have this posted online as well. It's a bit more detailed. Very similar in many respects to our original reopening plan. But it has, again, it's been updated. And before I turn it over to Ms. Kent, I want to just frame this and say, we are skipping hybrid completely and going straight to in-person, five days a week, every day. And so, I just want to make sure that's very clear, just completely skipping hybrid model. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Kent and she's gonna talk to the more details.
Great. Good evening, everyone. So, we have a six-phase model here. And you can see that we have been living in phase one for quite most of this year. And we are proposing five more phases, starting with easing in here, which would be the staff who teach substantially separate special education students and the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. In addition, conditioning for sports would take place. Then, on April 5th, those students would come back to the classroom and begin all in-person, that's five days a week in school. At the same time, all the other students would remain remote. And the Ola program will continue for those families who opt in to stay fully remote. In addition, on April 5th, teachers for the next band, Phase 4 students would be returning to school. In Phase 4, grades K to 4, as well as the fifth and sixth grade Caminos program at the Kelly, just to have that whole school beat together, would start with children on April 12th. Again, the rest of the district that is not in these two groups from Phase 3 and Phase 4 would continue remote. And Ola program again continues on. In Phase 5, we would, on April 28th, with the teachers returning five school days before that, and there's April break in here. So, the teachers would return the 14th. They'd have three days in school, then there'd be April break. They'd have two days again in school before the children. And then, the children would return on April 28th. Those would include the middle schools, grades 5 through 8, as well as the L, Level 1 and Level 2 students at the high school in the Bridge Academy. Finally, Phase 4, I'm sorry, Phase 6 would include the high school. And that's still up in the air. DESI has not yet put out a day, a date for high school. But when it does happen, the teachers return five days prior. And the whole, the whole school would return in-person in full for those who opt in. Again, Ola would be available to those families who would like to choose remote learning for their child. This year also, pre-K will continue remotely for the year. Also, our Centers for Online Learning will stay open as long as the school that they're in is not open. So, the Centers for Online Learning at the middle and high school will stay open through Phase 4. And then, it will continue at the high school for Phase 5 as the middle schools open. So, what has changed in the plan? So, the strict requirements for social distancing, especially in transportation, have been adjusted. So, social distancing of three feet for class and six feet for lunch. And this makes in-person learning possible and expected by DESI. Also, middle school schedules in the middle of January shifted on the time on learning requirements. And upper grades now have longer full-length days and reduced asynchronous time. And finally, new teaching innovation includes live streaming or simultaneous teaching, where students in the building and students at the, at home interact in the same class. So, half of the kids are in school and half of the kids may be at home or a portion of the kids at home are zooming together in the classroom and in the same class. That's not, many districts have been doing this throughout the pandemic, both around the country and in Massachusetts. And although it's not required for implementation, we are working to install what are called connected classroom studios in classrooms where there's a webcam at the back of the room and speakers to enhance the experience. So, what has stayed the same in the plan? Of course, health and safety is our top priority. The cleaning protocols, facility adjustments, and health and safety measures all remaining in place, including the use of masks for all grades, all students, and of course, all adults. Again, parents have the choice to have their students stay fully remote in the online learning academy. And the accountability during all learning models, including attendance, participation, and grades, continue. So, our next steps are to apply for a waiver from DESI for grades K to 5 to come a bit later. So, we're, we're working on a one-week delay from what DESI has asked for. So, we'll have to apply for that waiver and see what they say. We're also developing an MOU with the unions to meet all the staffing requirements. And a lot of these next things are off the ground, but we'll continue to prepare the pooled testing program, the survey of families, the vaccine clinics that have been set up, getting the facilities ready, putting the technology in for live streaming, and communication, of course, with all stakeholders. At this time, we happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Kent, for your presentation. I'd like to open it up to our school committee members if there are any questions or comments.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I know questions that are gonna be in the teachers' minds is classroom size, their overall safety, and if they have still family at home, wait, compromise, help. You know, what are we doing to ensure their safety in that way? I know at the HR office, they've been great with talking to employees and making the proper accommodations. So, I just wanted to ask again, what was being done? Because I know that question comes up a lot.
So, school committee member fellows, it will be the same process as in remote learning. They can contact HR. There are specific things that, questions that HR will ask, and then the determination will be made. So, there's special circumstances that we are aware of. And so, teachers who are, for example, immunocompromised, another example would be a teacher who is someone, an educator who is pregnant, they can reach out to our HR department and work through each circumstance on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one thing to say. Alleluia. I'm so glad to see this happening. It's coming a long time for these kids to get back into the classroom. I know most of the parents I have spoken to want the kids in the classroom, but they want it to be safe. And I'm trying to guarantee them that this is the safest way to get them back into the classroom. Thank you, Superintendent, for making it safe for the children to get back into the classroom. I know it's gonna be hard, but we have to start someplace. Thank you so much for getting this together with the union.
Thank you, Ms. Carolina. Mr. Wilson, I saw your hand.
I have a question to Mrs. Kent. High school, we don't know when the high school is going to be in session, but do we know if also the classrooms was gonna be teaching both in the classroom and also on video, you were saying, right? Will the teachers have more assistance also with another teacher in the classroom with the kids? That's hard to do, two things, teaching both ways, I think. So, can you clarify that for me? Please.
Hi, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. So, yes, the teachers would be teaching in most cases with students at home and students in school. We have very specialized teachers at the high school who are licensed in particular areas. So, it's very hard to offer a class online and a class in school. So, we're going to be merging the two. That's why the technology comes in of the webcam and the speaker so that teachers can move around the classroom and the kids at home can see what's happening in the classroom. I actually did visit another district that has been doing this all along, and it was very successful. I even saw a biology lab where kids in school were, they put them in breakout rooms and the kids in school were doing the hands-on part. And the kids at home were watching the lab and they were talking about it and discussing it, both at home and in school. It was really, really quite impressive. So, although the technology, the webcam, speakers are not necessary, I mean, really, all you need is a laptop and a projector, we are going the extra mile to try to get that technology for teachers. Your question about whether there'll be extra people in the classroom, if possible, but I can't say, and we don't have double teachers, right? So, when we could, we will. But realistically, the ratios and what was happening pre-pandemic would be happening now. So, some classrooms do have co-teachers, but most, I'll be honest, don't. You know, it's a matter of how we serve our children best.
Another question I have, if I can ask Chairwoman. Because the kids, I mean, again, I have nieces and nephews who are in this system also. Situation, I should say, would miss in school, missing their friends and stuff, routine. Will there be any type of support there for the kids when they come back to school for that reason, to help them out with any type of emotional issues they may have, adjusting back to the system or school, routine and stuff? Because even the youngest kids, the oldest kids are still having, even us adults are having issues with the change that we're dealing right now. So, will there be anything in place for the students when they come back to school for any social issues that they may be having?
Sure, I can take that one. There will be supports in place as we all, we are a very fortunate district because we do have school counselors and social workers in our schools. So, we will have those supports in place. And we're also very well aware of the fact that our kids have not been in school for an entire year. So, there's gonna be some adjusting. And I mean, with the little ones, some of them have never seen a regular classroom. And so, they've only known remote learning. So, there's a lot of routines and procedures that need to be learned and reviewed. And then, there's gonna have to be a lot of social emotional support. And we're, you know, we're gonna have to go slow to go fast. We're gonna have to take care of those social emotional needs first and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students first and then we can learn. So, I would like to say we're gonna go slow so we can go fast.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other questions from committee members? I have several, so I want to save myself for last. I have like five.
I just wanted to quickly just say hello. I'm just sorry that I was a little late. Had a work meeting that overlapped a little with the beginning. Although I did talk to Dr. Bada, not about that specifically, but about the plan. So, just wanted to make sure folks know that I was here. Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez, and welcome. Ms. Santiago, any questions? Ms. Enriquez?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Wilson, I see your hand. Go ahead.
One more question. This is it for me on this question. Can the parents anytime throughout the process, if they change their mind to opt out of either way of learning, can they, were they able to do that? Or are they stuck with that until the year ends? So, the parents will be taught, have the kid taught at home or they taught in school and they change their mind and mix means, oh, I can't, I want to do this. Do they have that option?
I would say that because we're starting really the last nine weeks, it would be a tough transition to keep moving kids from back and forth. I wouldn't recommend it unless for some odd reason, the student is really struggling or with a whatever, it would have to be on a case-by-case basis. But it really is, but when you think about it, it's nine weeks. So, we really want continuity and we're striving for continuity right now for students to even stay as much as possible with the teachers that they do have.
Thank you. Ms. Kent, I have a lot of questions from several parents who have stopped me and Market Basket, DMs me on Facebook. So, how would you like me to ask? Do you want me to ask all my questions all at once or one by one? One by one. Okay, great. And again, feel free, team, to tap in if there's more info that I'm missing here. My first question is communication. How will we be communicating the new systems, the new schedules, all of this really important information to families?
Do you, how about you direct your questions to me and then I can direct it to the appropriate staff? Okay, so communication will go through to the district office some. And then, we rely, what we realize is that the communication from the school to home is most effective. So, we will do our communication from district office as much as, you know, and communicate what we can. But we're also relying on our schools to communicate with families because that is, the research on school-to-home communication is actually more effective. So, they'll get both, but really more dependent on home to, school to home.
Thank you. I've had a few questions about uniforms. I've had a parent ask me, should I start buying uniforms? Should I not? Will uniforms be required upon re-entry?
Sarah, do you want to take that one?
Hi. So, I believe in most cases, the parent should reach out to the school before buying anything. Because I believe in some schools, I know for sure they're going to make it uniform optional for the rest of the year for that very reason. Because of, you know, buying things this time of year and the expense for nine weeks when kids grow so fast. So, they should reach out to the school, though, to check on the policy, to see what they are doing about uniforms. But it has been discussed. I know that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
So, the answer to that question is families should contact their local schools and get guidance from the principals from, because they will all be different.
Correct.
Can I hop in? I'm curious why we would want, why would we want to have some schools like, and, you know, if they choose to have the uniform, is that something that we should maybe think about making a policy district-wide?
So, each school community votes on whether they want uniforms or not. So, it's up to a school-wide council to decide what their preferences. So, it's a local decision at the school level.
Yeah, and Roberto, I guess back to your original point, that some schools, like, I believe it's the Kelly, has a uniform that was voted on because that's the process. Like, parents can gather signatures and request that their local school adopt that. But I think what we're saying is this is like conducive to the actual, you know, and that we're in these specific, you know, conditions. Like, if this is something that we should consider, you know, talking about, maybe this is another, I do agree, Roberto, I think this is maybe like another conversation, maybe at a subcommittee or Ms. Chairwoman, if this is something that we could like, maybe follow up after the meeting offline. But just, I think what I'm hearing is like, hmm, what, what could we have in place to support families if this becomes like, you know, a more broader need or a more broader discussion? You know, if there's a handful of families that, you know, start to identify a need for uniforms nine weeks out, you know, but I think it's worth paying attention to and if it's something that we should revisit, you know, after.
Yeah, I agreed. And I guess like the, but I think, I think that we should maybe like have the discussion at a subcommittee. But given that, you know, we've been pushed to kind of reopen our schools in two weeks, it just seems like we wouldn't necessarily have the time to do that, which is why I guess I'm bringing that up kind of more rushed than I wouldn't, I would otherwise want it to be. Because I, you know, wouldn't want people to be concerned and choose a different mode than what they would simply because they would have to, you know, comply with a, with a uniform policy.
I see a few, Ms. Villas and then Adam.
I just wanted to share that, and Mr. Wilson can attest because he's helped for several years. Chelsea Community Connections, we do a big uniform drive every year, even before COVID. Families know about it. We get big turnout. So, if, if decided in the nine weeks that a family may need a uniform, there are resources out here for that. We've done it for several, several years.
Twice a year, we do it too.
Yeah.
You can have one in the summertime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support. Mr. Delaney?
So, just, you know, I was texting behind the scenes. I can confirm that both Berkowitz and Kelly School are uniform optional. Sokolowski and Hooks do not have uniforms. So, the entire elementary complex is uniform optional. The Early Learning Center is, they don't have uniforms either. And I'm looking into middle schools right now. High school doesn't have uniforms.
Thank you.
So, that leaves us with the Brown and Clark left. All right. Thanks so much, Adam, for doing some extra digging. I really appreciate that. And thank you for everyone expressing their concerns. I too was very concerned because, you know, there are a lot of families that have been evicted throughout this year. And I can't, I can't express that enough of, our families are really struggling to survive this pandemic. And the last thing I want a family to be concerned about is purchasing a uniform for only nine weeks. So, thank you for expressing those concerns. My next question is in regards to MCAS testing. So, let's say a parent chooses remote, but their student is either on an IEP and has an accommodation for in-person testing or doesn't have an IEP, but the family is advocating for in-person testing. Could that be, could that request be met for the family?
MCAS is actually really sore subject right now because it's very difficult for urban educate, urban districts like us who are just barely coming back to have to administer MCAS in the midst of all of this. So, we will do what we can to make it easier for families and for students. But it's something what we are still advocating for, to not have to administer the MCAS. I don't know if we will, if that will be granted, but we're still working through that right now. But we will do our best to make sure we meet the needs of our students and families.
Thank you.
A whole question on that. I'm curious, is, is it allowed for the district to inform parents of their right to opt out of MCAS?
That's a very slippery slope because MCAS is tied to funding.
Sure, but this, I mean, this year, the commissioner has said that there, there won't be any, you know, repercussions for, you know, anything that has to do with MCAS. I'm curious, you know, if, I don't think we should be, you know, bringing in students just to take MCAS, right? And we know that it's a logistical nightmare to do so. So, I, you know, we just want to make sure that parents understand their rights, right? I'm not saying like, let's push for this to be the district policy, that people don't take it. But I think that, you know, at least for anyone watching this meeting, right? They should know that they have the right to opt out. And I guess I am curious, you know, if that is, if that is a possibility. But yeah, that's, I totally understand that. Thank you.
Dr. Bada, isn't there also graduation implications with graduation? graduation implications with graduation if you do not complete your MCAS or pass your MCAS by the 12th grade?
Correct.
Yeah. Um.
That, that requirement has been waived for this year, so people can graduate if they have not completed MCAS.
For seniors.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're doing our best to advocate. Um, so we're still, we're still advocating as well. Because it's, it's gonna be, the students are gonna come back and then take a test. So we're, we're, we're still advocating.
Is there anything we can do? I mean, maybe I'll ask you offline, but I'm wondering if there's anything else we can do to continue advocating for that.
Thank you.
Um, will the last day of school be the same as it is on the calendar? I've had a lot of questions from parents like, when is the last day? I need to know.
It is the same.
Okay. Whether remote or in person. Great. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, two more questions. Three more. Sorry. Um, now my, this question king is coming from me. My nephew was in a school prior to joining Chelsea Public. And that school had um both in-person and remote. And just observing my nephew in the remote setting. Um, it was really hard for the teacher to balance both students online and in person. So for example, what I witnessed, and once again, I'm not saying this is going to happen, but I'm wondering if you can share a little bit more about how the classroom setup will be. Because what I witnessed was my nephew doing things on a piece of paper. And then the teacher being so preoccupied with going around the, the desks and supporting students in person that sometimes she couldn't hear my nephew like, hey, miss, I need help, you know? And so I'm, I'm wondering what what the setup would be like in our schools for that kind of.
So to clarify, most of our simultaneous teach, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kent, but most of our simultaneous teaching will be, will not be at the elementary level for that exact reason. And it's i- i- it would, it would be difficult. Um, I will have Ms. Kent explain how this will work and she's actually observed it. And I think Ms. Kent, your son has been doing this for a while too.
So as Dr. Beta said, um, our K two four, you know, the ELC and the, the elementaries for the most part have already been co-horted into remote or in-person. So um we don't have the, there may be a couple cases in special programs or in special situations where we might need to livestream, but for the most part, they will not be doing simultaneous teaching. It's more in the middle and high school where we have specialized teachers, right? So um what we need, what you need to think about is first of all, number one is safety, health and safety. So, you know, classrooms are going to look different than they usually do. Uh, because kids are going to be spread out, right? Um, and, and different. So that will be taking place. Um, and then generally what I've, you know, witnessed or what I've seen is sometimes the Zoom squares are projected and, you know, because every room has a projector onto the whiteboard. Um, and we can have conversations that way. Um, as you say, I have also, you know, teachers are monitoring both what the kids on the, the Zoom are doing and also what kids in this classroom are doing. You also have to remember that teachers need to, won't be like leaning over kids' desks and things because we're going to be socially distant. So i- it's gonna have to be a more, you know, distant approach than we usually are. But it is something that I think for the upper grades and the older children, it will be, it will work. It's, it'll be different, but it will work.
Thank you. That clarified a lot of worry. Um, visitation guidelines. I, I know you know, there's meetings, there is IEP meetings. Um, will those still continue to be remote or will we allow visitors to enter the building during this nine-week period?
So visit, we're, we're still working on fine details of that, to be honest. Um, right now, visitors have to sign, would have to sign in. It could possibly be that they call in advance, like families, if they need to pick up their students. Um, we just want to make sure that there's limited visitors in our buildings. Um, so those are things that we are um we're, we're working on as far as like even social distancing. What does that look like when someone does come into the building? How far away do they have to be from the office area? And then when they do come in, they need to sign in as well. So um, the goal is to not have visitors in the building, but we recognize that families have to pick up their students. And um, so we just have to be really circumspect about how we do that. And Adam, I don't know, I, I know you're uh just stopped your video. Um, Adam and his team worked on a lot of the safety in regards to that. So Adam, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Um, not really. I think, I think it was covered.
Thank you. And then one last question. Um, and Dr. Beta, you mentioned this um previously in preparation for the Boston Foundation Panel that I participated in. But for those watching at home, I know there's a lot of concerned parents about, um, you know, there's a lot of kids failing, right? There's a lot of seniors who are um scared of not being on track to graduate. So will they, will there be opportunities for credit recovery for students who have a lot of Fs right now?
Yeah, we are intervening as we speak. We've been tracking students. Um, we will be doing some Saturday recovery schools and in the fall, in the summertime also, there will be credit recovery opportunities and not just credit recovery, but acceleration as well. Uh, for our younger grades, we really have to focus on literacy. So we, again, with our budget, we've added five reading specialists to the liter- literacy. We're also doing some intervening right now with um Sarah, you can share a little bit more about, is it, it's Spring Board? And that's a wonderful opportunity. And then in the fall, we're looking at doing some credit recovery options in the evening with Twilight School. So, but I would love for Ms. Kent to share a little bit more about what we're doing actually in the very near future for our little ones.
So we have a very exciting partnership with a group called Spring Board. Uh, this is a group that Desi had sought out and made a partnership with, and they approached us to ask if we would like some um support with um foundational reading skills. So we actually have a group of forty-three first graders that are participating in the program now. Um, but we tomorrow, breaking news, um, tomorrow, we will be sending out a link that any kindergarten to grade three students could sign up to be part of the program for a ten-week session that starts April fifth and goes basically till the end of the year. And what that is, is it's two forty-five minute sessions with a teacher in a group of five um, working on foundational reading skills. Um, it would be after school. Um, so it does not matter if you were a remote learner or an in-person learner. Um, either way, you would be able to participate. And there are rewards and prizes and even some pair, a few parent workshops on how to help your child learn to read. It's a really wonderful program um that I, we're going to be sending out through Class Dojo um to lots of, to all the parents. It's going to be on our website tomorrow. Um, there's a link where you click to sign up. Um, and it's, we have lots of seats and we would love, love, love to have our kids get that extra boost this spring.
That is incredible and so exciting. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Ms. Santiago, I see your hand raised. Do you have a question or a comment?
Yes, um, are your, I just wanted to check if you, there was anybody else in queue for questions and if you were all set with your questions before I started.
Uh, yeah, that was my last question.
Great. And thank you for your questions because I certainly shared some of them. So I appreciate that. Um, and gives me less questions to ask because they're very answered. Um, so I wanted to just preface with before I asked a couple of questions, this is a very important meeting um before we take this vote. And I just really wanted to preface that while we might have families split on their level of, you know, wanting to bring children back into the building and some families who, you know, are choosing to stay remote at this time. Um, I just really want to preface here that um for those, for the families, the, the teachers, our building staff, you know, the Chelsea Public School District as a whole, that this is not something I think that the school committee really envisioned. Um, I'll speak for myself in particular, that when we started these conversations about slowly phasing in and under the leadership of Dr. Albeida, when you shared that when these positivity rates fell, you know, I think below five, which gratefully were there, um, that we would start these conversations again. Um, and the process as it stands, you know, one of the benefits, I think, that I've been reiterating is that as a district, we've really taken huge leadership here and I'm forever ever grateful uh to you, Dr. Albeida. Um, for not only, you know, being fairly new to the district, but just being really brave and courageous, you know, and, and stepping forward and making really tough decisions. Um, that showed that they were the right decisions. And a lot of that really meant like strong messaging and real, you know, really relying on sound data. Um, that honored the safety of our community. And I think first and foremost, I'm just in complete gratitude, you know, and, and a really good place going forward based off my experience and what I've observed from the district and the team. Um, having said that, you know, Desi is imposing um these guidance guidelines um towards districts where I think in the past, we were able to have much more leeway. We were able to articulate as a community what our specific needs are um and how COVID has impacted this city. Um, we've been able to be consistent in saying that, you know, everyone needs to stay home, right? We all did our part in relaying and reiterating these messages and this shared responsibility. And so, you know, while we're all, you know, eager to think about what's next, um, you know, there, there is sort of, I will just be honest on my part, it isn't an immediate hurrah. It isn't like yay, we're gonna rush everybody back into these buildings, whether they agree to or not. And I think there's a lot of families and staff that still feel very uneasy about it. Not because we know that we can't try, you know, new things and that eventually we need to take a step. But it's not under the premise that, you know, again, as I said in every meeting, Chelsea was, is the number one city that's been most impacted. Comparably, one of the highest cities in the country. And, you know, so like the spread rate, again, super high. So our demographics and the things that the city has put in place, a stabilization, emergency stabilization, um, housing fund in the city, thinking about how we care for essential workers, these are a large percentage of our families and parents of students in the Chelsea Public Schools. Um, and when we see data from other cities, whether it's rural, urban, it's still very, we're in a very unique position. And I say all this because I am really confident in Dr. Albeida's leadership. Really confident in the fact that at every single turn, I've really witnessed you really look at this information, come up with the best plan possible, but I am super upset and frustrated and disappointed in the state and their lack of understanding and their lack of saying like, let's really figure out and work closely with each district because we're the ones that understand our needs. So I think like, given that these new mandates came down the pipe and saying like, these are the guidelines in which you have to come up with a reopening plan, I just want the community to understand that like Dr. Albeida and the team and us as a school committee, that we're gonna do everything we can, that we're gonna keep those lines open as we continue to move this process forward. But this was not um something that I think we, we all sort of saw coming in this kind of fashion. And, you know, we're gonna take baby steps, you know, and we're gonna obviously be, you know, here at every turn. But, you know, it, I think it's definitely important to distinguish to families in the community. Um, how, how caring you've been, Dr. Albeida, throughout this whole time. Um, and the level of information that you're really closely looking at as we continue along. You know, I look forward to the conversation, you know, as we continue post tonight on this vote. Um, but, you know, in terms of timeline and the process and, you know, what's to come, I just want the community to know that it's, you know, we're, we're working within, you know, certain demands and guidelines um that are coming from the state. And um in that, I know that, you know, the governor is also in his administration needs to think about how the city continues to get funding um so that we can be able to offer, you know, the best possible um options for our families. Um, and how to protect the progress that we've made under the pandemic. Um, and so all that said, uh, I know we talk about our most vulnerable students. Ms. Garcia talked about, you know, high school students and graduating. That's something that I'm really, you know, when I think about our, our students in terms of if there's a, a, a way to really think about their time um and, and, and their, you know, upcoming plans. I, I, I really wanted to hear more about, you know, the, the plan for you know, our high school students in particular, perhaps even our juniors and, and seniors um that are in a closer timeline towards graduation. Um, the other thing is, you know, when we talk about most vulnerable, we, on a previous meeting, we talked about early childhood education being really critical um as a benchmark to determine, you know, how successful our students are coming into elementary years. And, you know, there are other districts that have started, you know, pre-K and kindergarten. Um, that's something that I really want us to keep paying attention to and to really guard safely. Um, because I think that is really challenging to do online. Um, and, you know, our little ones really need, you know, we need to, to keep them in mind um and think about what the plan is for them. Um, and, you know, I know that we talked about children that are in special education, um, including, um, you know, our ELL students. I know that also in conversations. Sorry, I got, I don't know if I got disrupted. I had a call. Um, forgive me. So special education's ELL students. Um, and just thinking about that going forward, that we continue to make sure that, you know, their needs are being met and that we can continue to appropriate, you know, the adequate resources. I am also super concerned about the synchronous learning. Um, and I think um Ms. Kent for, you know, sharing that this is probably like a focus for more middle school and high school students. I can understand if there's a specialty um that they're taking where we might, you know, be short-staffed and we have to be really wise about how we carry forth, you know, in the next nine weeks. Um, so I'm gonna trust that, you know, we'll be able to again, keep an eye on that, right? And um, hopefully keep those programs moving along so that our students can complete their courses. Um, all that said, uh, you know, I know we're all very eager, you know, to, to give it the best we have. Um, in terms of safety, you know, I'm just gonna echo, I think, what's already been said. Um, but I, I am really concerned about this three feet uh measure because that's not something that the CDC has actually said was appropriate. Um, so again, I just, I'm really upset, granted, at, at the state and their lack of um, their lack of support for the city of Chelsea in this, in this way, in the way that these guidance um guidelines came down. Um, and I'm really struggling with the fact that we have to sort of, you know, fit the, sort of fit the box in the circle, you know, like it just doesn't, you know, we're doing the best we can here. Um, but it, we have to do everything in our power to make sure that all the progress we've made, that we can continue to keep making that progress from a place of leadership, from a, from a place of strength. Um, and from a place of pushing back because we have been leading here in our city. You know, we've been doing it. We've been part of the pandemic task force. Many people in here from all different roles, from food distribution to housing, you know, to, to our schools. So I just want to say all that to, to keep encouraging us um to advocate and also that it's not all on our superintendent, right? Like if we have questions or we're seeing other policies or other cities that are doing good things, like to share it with Dr. Albeida so that we can keep, you know, these things at the forefront as we continue this process.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. I wasn't sure if there were questions in there, uh, but I want to make sure that if you did have questions, they were answered before turning it over to Mr. Jimenez.
I think I'll, I'll, I'll end there. I think, I think I could save the rest for other conversations, but appreciated. You can continue.
Of course. I do realize I was talking fast and I apologize to our translator. So a friendly reminder to our school committee members to um pace ourselves for our translation team. Go ahead, Mr. Jimenez.
Yeah, um, I want to start by saying that Marisol's a lot.
Yeah, um, I want to start by saying that Marisol's a lot better at the thank you and appreciation part of this. Um, but I do really, really echo all of her appreciation for our staff on this call, our staff across the district. You've kept our kids safe. So, you know. Hats off to you for all the work that you've done. However, you know, as we're getting ready to take this vote, I, I feel that we really have to address the undemocratic nature of why we're taking this vote. Um, a couple of weeks ago, Desi, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They decided that they were tired of letting local school districts have control over their schools. Um, and the board voted to give all power over whether schools are open or not to Commissioner Jeff Riley. My opinion, that is undemocratic. It's a power grab that goes against the laws of Massachusetts and against the principles of local control that are foundational to education governance in our state. Beyond that, the state guidance that has been provided to us goes against CDC guidance by declaring that three feet is now distancing standard. Um, instead of six feet by saying that there should not be hybrid models to provide for spacing of students. Um, creates a situation where remote learning counts for a student if the parent says that it does, but not if the school committee. The elected policymaking body of this district says that it does. And lastly, it threatens our state education funding if we don't comply with that undemocratic power grab. That's not okay. Um, I think it's outrageous that as the vaccination rollout has been a disaster. And our staff were not prioritized until only very recently, Desi decides that now is the time to push for reopening, right? We've been hard at work trying to figure out our budgets for next year. So the timing of this decision by Desi really comes at the worst possible time with our central office staff being asked to juggle yet another, you know, another ball or two right in the air as we try to continue running the district. Getting through this budget process, coming up with another reopening plan. And in Chelsea's case, adding the fact that we're contract negotiations um with our, with our union. It really seems like the commissioner just like woke up one day and he decided that he had had enough of us. Even though he never even bothered to engage with our school committee in Chelsea or elsewhere, right? He only met with the MASC once. After, the day after they issued the first guidance, right? So it wasn't even in any, in any particular way that, that, that meant gathering input from us. I'm gonna be voting in favor of this plan, but I'm not doing it because I believe it's what we should be doing right now. But I'm doing it because it's the only option our district has left. We had better plans. They were shut down. We had our legal rights to decide for our community, right, as Chelsea School Committee. Um, whether, you know, when and how we reopen, but that right was taken away. So what do we have now? We have essentially a statewide receivership where we, as a school committee, don't get to make decisions anymore. And the state makes every call. Desi has made this whole process more difficult for us every step of the way. And I don't have any confidence in their ability to prioritize the well-being of our students. It's shameful and we deserve better. And again, I want to say thank you to all of our staff for the incredible work that you've done, jumping through these increasingly ridiculous hoops that Desi's setting for us. You also deserve better and I'm sorry that we can't give that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
I have another statement to make.
Go ahead, Ms. Carlisle.
Thank you so much. I heard everybody speaking tonight. As members of the Chelsea School Committee, we are here to represent the children in the community. Let's do what's right for them. It's been the most difficult time in their lives, learning remotely. Let's get them back into the classrooms. Let's keep on top of them, making sure that things are going the right way. And I know that superintendent and her staff are making it a safe environment for them. Let's try it, get them back into the classroom off the remote learning because they need this social um environment too. So I will definitely be voting on this tonight. And Superintendent, um, thank you so much. I know you've been going through a very difficult time. Fighting back and forth, forth with the union in the city of Chelsea. But when we vote tonight, you vote from your heart. You vote for the children in the community and their needs. Thank you very much.
Ms. Carlisle, um, I appreciate your comments and you're always a excellent cheerleader for getting our kids back into the buildings. But I just want to caution you that every single family, including mine, because I believe, I will say it again. I'm the only school committee member who currently has a child in the Chelsea Public Schools. My child is remote. My child will remain remote because that is a choice that I, as a parent, am choosing is best for my family. And so I think it is not okay for us as uh school committee members to be insinuating that we know what's best for every single household in this city, because even I don't know that. That wouldn't be factual. And I think that our duty here as a school committee is to advocate for sure for all different voices, all different perspectives, because there's many. And to be respectful about every single person, no matter which way they come from this particular issue. And to make space for consideration of their particular needs and, and situations. Um, because this is not uniform in Chelsea and it's certainly not uniform in the state. So I think it's our duty to advocate, to work with our superintendent, to work with the staff. And, and bring information for sure, um, and be part of the conversation and be part of, you know, creating options. But this is not a uniform situation for every single person. Um, and we have to just be mindful of that.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Santiago. Um, that's why we gave them the option to have their children back into the classroom or continue remotely. That is up, definitely up to the parents. But my opinion is, as a school committee member, I want to try this and see if it works and I hope it works. And for the parents who want to continue to have their children learn remote like you do, that's fine with me too. Whatever is the best things for the students in the Chelsea school system, that's what I'm for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle and Ms. Santiago. Mr. Jimenez, go ahead.
Yeah, just have a, just a quick comment. Um, I just want to make sure there was a reference made to fighting against the union. Um, I don't consider the union to be our opponents. They have been our allies throughout this entire time to make sure that our students are receiving the education that they deserve and, and that we have been able to provide during this pandemic. So I think that um characterizing the relationship as, as adversarial is harmful um to, to, to our staff and to our students, honestly. Um, I think that that is not, um, you know, the, the way that, that we should be. Um, you know, addressing, uh, you know, really talking about our staff. Um, I think, yeah, I'll leave it at that. I don't want to belabor the, the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Ms. Velez?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, um, I've been on several Zoom. I've had the opportunity to volunteer in classrooms and, and be part of the Zoom teachings and I'll meet, Dr. Beta knows because I call her. Um, and because fully, if you want to see the work that's being done, you have to be part of the classroom. You know, you can't just go for what we're listening from central office. Um, it's better to be there. And I've had great experiences and I've had some sad ones and I've shared it with Dr. Beta. So um, I agree with Ms. Santiago. A lot of the work that's been done for Chelsea is because of the local people that have been here and that have been working hard for our families. Um, you know, and we feel kind of forced to open, but in a way, I'm, I'm glad that we have this opportunity. Um, I've been in a first grade classroom. Those kids were amazing. They knew how to work Zoom. Um, they knew it better than me. They were interacting with the teacher. Everybody was so happy. Then I was in a third grade classroom and I was very sad. The teacher was sharing with me. You know, some of the writing samples, um, the children were doing and they were not at grade level. So that made me sad because they're missing out from being at home and not all the children have educated parents that could help them, you know, so. If this pandemic was happening when I was a child, I would be one of those children falling behind. My mom cared for me. She made sure I was fed and I had everything else, but she couldn't help me academically. So I'm glad that we can give a choice. Um, and we're not jumping in, you know, to fully remote with the whole district coming in. Um, I think that gives some ease to parents. I'm pretty sure maybe even some that are choosing to go back to school, they might be feeling a little nervous. Um, you know, but they're doing it because some of the students are really behind, they're struggling and, you know. Our parents want the best for their children. And so that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. But Ms. Garcia, forgive me, I just had a one small question regarding uh not no comments, but questions. Right? And thank you for allowing us to engage in this conversation. Um, but I wanted to ask, um, given the data that we have collected. Um, where we started off in this process, you know, a year ago. And I too was very grateful for choice. Thank you, um, Ms. Velez for echoing that word loud and proud because that's super important. Um, the, the percentage of students that, you know, we had talked about, like, you know, we felt comfortable offering remote and hybrid. You know, if the percentage positivity rates dropped, which they currently did, they are below what we agreed to. Um, what is the total amount of students that we need to prepare as of today? That are wanting to return to in-person learning? Is that, you know, fifty percent of our total student population or is there like a ballpark number in terms of preparing for them?
Yeah, if you look at right now, we're still getting survey results back. But in our elementary, if the, I, the number was fifty-six percent that want to return. So Kate. So we got those, we got, we did the first survey, we did elementary because according to the Desi guidelines, we were, we're supposed to start off with elementary first, K through five. Um, we will start off K through four because fifth grade is actually in middle grades in Chelsea. And so we started off just surveying families first in K through four. So there was a li- a little bit of shift of stu- of families choosing in-person learning this spring. Um, so it's at fifty-six percent. And then as surveys and they're not, they have the deadline for middle grades and high school are not complete yet. But it's looking about the same, maybe a bump a little bit, but it hasn't, uh, has increased a little bit more. So that means that families are feeling a little bit more comfortable or they're like, they're, they're, you know, they're ready for students to be in person. So you're looking at about right, I will say comfortably K through four, fifty-six percent desire in-person learning. Which is a little bit up from the last survey that we did.
And that's about, I think according to the slides, fifty-six percent of roughly was, or Ms. Kent, I don't know if it was two thousand students or, or my, okay, yes. Um, perfect. Thank you, Almi, for the, just the getting understanding of that. Um, and is there a plan to, would we be able to use more buildings in this? And pardon me if I'm jumping too far ahead, but, you know, has that been a discussion considering how we can use buildings to um, have smaller uh classrooms or groupings that, that could help?
So the way we are making a couple of things work is we are purchasing tents. So we've learned from other districts actually and, and from superintendents. School districts who've been at hybrid learning and in-person learning this entire year. And so, uh, for example, when I speak to my colleagues up in Beverly, she says those tents are gonna stay up all year long. And so they use that to, to create space like at lunchtime, for example, or um, in general, you know, because at Chelsea, we don't have, as you know, we don't have a lot of space in our buildings. And as you know, we're, 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 our buildings are confined and we don't have swing space. And many districts that I've worked in, we've had an entire school sitting empty that we're able to use for swing space if we were building a building or something. Unfortunately, in Chelsea, we don't have swing space. So we're looking at tents, we're looking at that, that's the one way we can expand. Um, and so it's, 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 that's a challenge for us. Uh, so we're, we're trying to think creatively uh and ask other districts. Other districts have gone before us and we've learned so much from them. And so just asking around, what are you doing? You know, how are you making this work for you? So.
Uh, promise my last question and I will be muted till the end. Um, is transportation, I know, I think Ms. Kent spoke, touched on that very briefly, if I'm confused, but will the district not be offering transportation given the, the guidelines?
That is actually in our reopening book and I'm gonna have Ms. Lamboy um, speak about transportation since she oversees transportation.
Good evening. Um, we will be offering transportation. The yellow bus is a service the district has been offering to students outside a particular radius. We're waiting right now to get the results from the families to see how many students are requesting or would be eligible for bus service. Um, the change, when we originally gave the plan in the summer. There was a very substantial distance required on the buses that where we normally would carry seventy-seven students who would only be able to carry twenty-five. Um, Desi has removed those restrictions, so we have much more flexibility for capacity for students. Um, right now, we are waiting to see what the numbers look like. We understand that families will likely want to see a more spacious bus than, than is the num- the typical bus. Um, and so when we have the numbers, we'll know how many students per bench would be required to, for that capacity. So I'm hopeful that with the lower enrollment or the lower in-person numbers that, that things will align well with the buses. And then the door-to-door transportation that's required for our special needs students, um, we will absolutely provide that. And as spacious as an accommodation as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamboy. Ms. Hernandez, do you still have a question?
Um, yes, well, now, now I have, only have a comment because my question was transportation. And Marisol got that answer for me, so I don't have to do that one. Um, I guess what I have is a comment and basically in that, I don't think, um, like we discussed. There is no right or wrong in what anyone here is saying and any of my colleagues. Um, I think Roberto's frustration, I hear it and understand it and feel it myself in the fact that we have ta- we have been stripped of our power to make decisions over our district in what is right or wrong for our kids. Um, and basically, that's been taken away from us, um, away from the people that know best what is best for them. And we've been basically told at the last minute, you need to do all this. In this timeframe by this, in, in the midst of every other chaotic thing we have going on. Um, and at the same time, I also feel that the kids do need to get back to school. For all the reasons to be around the other kids, to be in the classroom, to learn. To have that contact with the teacher. There's nothing like in-person learning, um, I feel. Like Jeanette, if that, this had happened when I was growing up, I too. Um, I did not have parents that would have been able to help me in the slightest bit. Um, but I think everybody, I think we all want the best for the kids. I don't think there's any one school committee member that's saying something that's not positive for the children of Chelsea. Um, but I do, I do feel and understand Roberto's frustration. And I too feel frustrated um for it. I too will be voting, of course. Um, yes, today because this is what we need to do. We have our hands tied and we don't have any other options anyway. And I know, and I have total trust in our administration and know that, that Almi, along with her staff is doing the best for, for the, for the, that our children. And we'll always do the best. So I just want to thank everyone. That has participated and taken part in, in getting all this done so quickly and ready. And, and I pray that this will all work out and that it will be the best step that could happen for our kids. And then next year, they will all be back and we'll all be able to be ready to learn in person. And happy and this will be in our past and they'll be able to learn from what happened. And just move forward with a lot more, having, having learned a lot more life lessons. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Alrighty, team, I think we are ready uh to get our votes in. If there are any other committee members that have any lingering thoughts, feel free to interrupt. Um, I'm happy to open it up for continued discussion. Um, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Just think that, um, a couple of things. We gotta thank everybody who was a part of the, uh, the conversation. And that includes the, the teachers union, that includes the city, um, public school department, Dr. Beta, her administration, and also the state. Because, um, this has been a tough time for everybody. I mean, not having a child in the school system and all, but having neighbors, having nieces, the nephews in the school system. And listening to them, talking to me, how they feel. Not living here, but they live, they live in Haverhill. But I still, they going through the same thing that our kids here in Chelsea are going through. And my And my, their, their parents and, you know, the frustration, both on the part of having the kids stay at home with them or having the kids go back to school. Every single district is having the same problem we're having right now in Chelsea. And the frustration is all across the country. I just hope and I pray that this is the last thing that we have to worry about for nine weeks, that this is it and that come in September of 2021, we'll start off nice and fresh. But keep this in mind, everybody, every single school district is having this problem. And also let you guys know that because I'm a member of the Show Collaborative Board, there are show collaborators places closing down because of the kids not being able to be in class. So there's a lot of things going on out here that is affecting us all. And because we are where we are right now, as Chelsea School District, it just cool as for all of us. Each and every one of us, as well as our leaders in the school department, in the Teachers Union, in the teachers, in the students and the parents, thank you all, because this is happening everywhere. And we, we making it through. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Alrighty, team. Dr. Beta, do you mind posting the agenda up for us again? If you don't mind. Alrighty, team. Consideration. Sorry, give me one second. Alright, team, we are on number four on the agenda. Consideration and action, I'm sorry, consideration and vote for the school reopening plan for 2020, 2021. Veronica, may we please have a roll call?
Consideration and vote on the updated school reopening plan for school year 2020, 2021. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, one absence, the motion carries. Next item is consideration and vote on the waiver to seek in connection with the timeline for in-person learning as established by the Commissioner of Education for Spring 2021. The waiver will be for K four, sorry, K to four, to start in-person learning on April 12th in grade five, in-person learning, to start with the middle grades on April 28th. Veronica, roll call, please.
Consideration and action to vote on what, if any, waivers to seek connection with the timeline for in-person learning as established by the Commissioner of Education for Spring 2021. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia, Merza?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Let's say in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, one absence, the motion carries. Team, I'd just like to thank everyone for answering all the million questions and concerns that we brought up during today's meeting. I know it's been a very long journey to get to this point, so thank you for every minute dedicated to developing this plan. Our students are so fortunate to have a team like we have here in Chelsea that really cares for every single student and their families. Communication will be sent out. Feel free to reach out if you have any questions and thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Adjourn.
Second wonderful meeting adjourned at 7:51 PM. Good night, everyone, and be safe.